Here, Counselor Esposito.
Here.
Counselor Fawnin.
Here.
Counselor Fusen. Counselor Rose.
Here.
Okay, I'm just gonna ask that everyone please shut their cell phones off. And we're gonna begin on the fiscal year 2014, 2015 budget deliberations. Item A revenues. We'll start the beginning of our books. Unless you have any questions as how that you wanted to start with.
I have a question on the taxes. How are we handling the RWA? What percentage of their tax bill have we figured into this budget?
Weren't we at eighty-five? Rose, didn't we say eighty-five? Was it always eighty? But we're gonna put aside. It was always eighty.
Eighty percent of the RWA. And would, is it that they have to pay ninety percent of their tax?
Ninety percent of their personal property and nine percent of real estate. Ninety percent of personal property, ninety percent of real estate.
Okay.
Anthony, is this non-tax revenue? I think that's, uh... Should, and this may be the wrong page, but is this, uh, the seventy-five thousand for the local elderly tax credit? Did we move that to a hundred?
Uh, when the vote was created, it still was the seventy-five. So you guys have to act to change it. That's not to change yet.
So when you say we have to act to change, you mean a motion tonight?
Correct.
Based on the action we've already taken, we'll move to, uh, increase that number from seventy-five to a hundred thousand.
Second one.
Moved by Counselor Fawnin, seconded by Counselor Rose. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Now, are there any questions in the forty-one twenty-five Town Manager? Department four, one, two, five? Might as well start. Is everybody good with forty-one twenty-five?
What's the professional development?
Those are, yeah, I mean, we really think it's three nineteen.
Three nineteen.
Yeah, those are, uh, the state and national organizations of managers.
And who are the two physicals for under Town Manager?
I'm sorry, who's the what?
Employee physicals and drug testing. In the Town Manager's classification, who does that cover?
That, I think, is just a catch-all placeholder for any of the employees we need to cover. It just happens to fall here.
Oh, okay.
There's other things on here.
Typically, if a compire expenses are charged at that line.
Okay.
They're also what departments they fall into, they're charged to manage the code.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And I know it's not a lot, but what's the other contractual, five seventy-five?
That's, that's where the physicals are. If you look on the back.
On the back, okay. That's the back of where. Seventy-two hundred, how long is that? Move on to forty-one thirty. Oh, you're good with forty-one twenty-five, we're down to forty-one thirty.
As a one conference commander, that department, look at the three twenty account. Due to an cooperation of the police department, we've been able to reduce our banking fees. We typically, previously had a courier service.
Right.
That we paid for, and the cooperation of the police department, they now escort us to the bank. And we were the courier service, and we're saving about six thousand dollars a year.
Right.
Where in three twenty does that come out, Anthony?
Uh, three twenty, where's the banking fees?
I see safety deposit. Oh, banking. Okay, so it's already accounted for, and we don't have to make a change.
Thank you, Chief. And in the finance on the three twenty, other contractual, do we actually have a lockbox?
There's a lockbox, yeah. We have that at Bell's Bar, but we're not sure. We bring the computer backups once a week for off-site backups. We have off-site backup of our data.
But that says banking fees except tax lockbox. Is that the same?
Tax lockbox fees you'll see in the next department, the tax collector.
Oh. Oh, from the finance, the one-on-one, did you want to talk about? The one-on-one?
So under the, um, either full-time or part-time, and I think, uh, as we go through this, uh, budget, you know, there's not much in here. So the only thing that, um, as a council, we can really look at is to see what, um, what we can do with personnel. So, um, in talking to some of the counselors, if, uh, you know, when we get to a department that we have questions on, I think, you know, we're gonna ask the question, and then next week, you can come back and tell us what, since you're first, what your world looks like. And, uh, so I'll ask the question, whether it's a full-time or part-time, if there's any movement that we can live with. I mean, you're here every day, all day. And, uh, see what that would look like. See if there's any, any, uh... Room there.
What are your, what are your thoughts? What were you, you mean, I do you looking at accomplishment? All right, you looking at...
Have somebody reduced hours? Anything that's there, that, you know, does, uh, one of the full-time go to part-time? Do we get rid of a part-time, or can we do nothing? So... And I don't, yeah, I don't want you to just tell me tonight, we can't do anything. I want you to think about it, and then next week, come back and say, I thought about it, you can do nothing. I know you.
In my mind, must have been a boy.
So, you know, I mean, there's no place to... You know, I mean, there's nothing else here that we can look at. And, um, pretty much across the board, there's nothing we can look at.
All right.
Anyone else have anything on here?
What, what about the additional full-time hours? Is that a necessity at certain times of the year, or?
Yeah, typically, because we're the thirty-five hour a week, when they go between thirty-five and forty, before it kicks into overtime, it's an additional full-time. So if they go up to thirty-five hours a week, you're right, typically, it's as we're doing the W-2 processing, or any year-end stuff that may run longer than the regular workday, that's those hours are there to accommodate. Yeah, it's only ten hours for the entire year.
And it's the same time with, same thing with the...
It's only for the account clerk, and both the full-time and the part-time.
I don't see anything else.
Okay, forty-one thirty-one, tax collector.
What are we splitting these salaries between tax collector and what other department?
Sewer Works Operating Fund. Because of their, their workload is split between passing sewer. You split across, I can pass in sewer. You might have also in the town administration department as well.
I guess that's where I had a question, on the TD Bank lockbox fees. Do we actually have, oh, I didn't think we had a lockbox at TD Bank. We do?
Not a safety deposit box, too, a lockbox.
A lockbox. I thought, I thought it was like an envelope that they had, they would call.
There's two things, they, they collect them over the counter, the people who went with a tax payment that's very infrequent. The majority of it is the, um, tax bill's printed with a P.O. box three forty-nine. The person from TD Bank has a key level of that P.O. box, he goes, picks it up, brings it, and then processes it after, uh, processing the landing is agreed.
Where's our tax collectors? Is he here tonight?
There he is.
So you get the same assignment?
Do I get the same assignment?
You get the same assignment.
Oh, I get it.
And I want, I wanna be clear on it, I wanna see, what I wanna hear is what your world looks like, either with half a person gone, or a whole person gone. I wanna hear that either you can't do the job, or that you're, um, people are gonna come into town, and, uh, they have to wait one day, or they have to wait one week, or it can't be done. So, you know, I'm, I'm serious, I want you guys to, to tell us, what are we doing, what would we be doing if we eliminated a half a position or a position?
Okay.
Okay? And again, I don't have anything else. I don't know what else we can look at.
Okay, we're gonna move on to forty-one thirty-two. Everybody? Forty-one thirty-two, the assessor.
Anthony, do you know, is the, the part-time personnel in here, that's not the additional part-time person they were requesting to do, uh, field audits on personal property?
What it was reduced to, there should be a note there on that writing column. There's one person who currently works nineteen hours a week. Fourteen hours of it is assigned to the town clerk, and five hours of it is assigned to the assessor. So when you see that number of thirty-nine fifteen, basically, that's that one hour a day, five days, five hours.
This is the person that covers for lunch, is there something like that?
Yeah, directly.
Does that affect the other contractual, is that why there's a decrease there?
Yeah, as, as the manager had alluded to, there was a request to do, uh, ten thousand dollars worth of personal property audits, and it's not as easy as it sounds, there's a lot of work that goes into that, repricing, and rebutting, and all of that, so... If you're not gonna give the staff to compensate, then you're gonna bring that home down to five thousand off of the audit. If I could just add one comment, but the comment that was made last night, that the purpose of personal property audits is to harass the business person, that's not it at all. The whole, whole job of the assessor is to be equitable. So if Marie has a business, and she reports her personal property, you know, religiously, and pays her taxes, and Joe, for some reason, doesn't want to report this properly, shouldn't the town go and audit Joe occasionally, and say, hey, Joe, your numbers aren't accurate? So in fact, we may save Marie money by bringing everybody's tax base up to realistic numbers, where if you have Joe, who tries to skirt the system, and Andrew, and... It's, it's only making the, the job fairer for Marie, who's reporting her property taxes and, and paying them fully. So don't look at the personal property audits as a penalty. It's, it's about equality, it's about equity amongst all the taxpayers. If Marie's doing a good job, she should be happy we're doing audits. We're making, we're making Joe come to the plate, Andrew come to the plate, instead of her paying the whole tax burden. And this, this last past and this current year, it's estimated that about the five thousand we spend, are gonna be about twenty-five thousand dollars back in, in, in revenue. So it's many times over what you spend by finding people who aren't reporting properly. So at least don't look at audits as we're penalizing the business person, we're trying to make things out for amongst all the people. That's all the goal is.
So have we done the...
Five this year, five thousand this year, we're gonna generate twenty-five thousand dollars.
And we've done those audits already?
Correct.
That'll offset the deficit a little bit.
Well, when you look at it that way, you really can't, uh, can't justify cutting, uh...
Doesn't make sense.
I'll spend five thousand for twenty-five thousand all day long.
Right.
Where, where is that money this year?
It was in the three twenty account in the current year.
Is there none in this year?
No, there's five thousand.
Five thousand?
Are there any other further questions on forty-one thirty-two?
Personal property audits, Anthony, there's ten thousand dollars in the budget. Are we good?
I don't necessarily as well, right? It's an equation, and we did five thousand, times twenty-five, which you ten, we're gonna get fifty. If people know that people are out there doing some audits randomly, it may be sufficient to encourage people to be upfront with their...
All right.
Well, that's true, I, I just saw the ten, and I didn't realize.
If we had the five thousand dollars, it'd be great, but we're scraping for nickels and dimes.
So to be fair, I'm gonna ask Christine, uh, to do the, where's she at? There she is. Come back with the same thing, what happens if we lose some time in your department? It's a bad department to lose time in. It's a bad department to lose time in, I guess.
Are there any other further questions on forty-one thirty-two? Okay, move on to department forty-one thirty-three.
I really don't think there's much to cut in here, it's almost sixteen hundred.
Yep. Forty-one thirty-six, Central Services. And three oh two on the Town Hall Electric, I mentioned it before, it states twenty-one cents per kilowatt for U.I. And I know there's some results in this budget, I saw U.I. at fourteen cents a kilowatt. Just seems high to me, to be paying twenty-one cents a kilowatt.
Tell them the, uh, reverse, reverse.
That's a combination of the transmission fees from U.I., and then the actual plus the electricity through Liberty Power. We just, uh, participated in a reverse auction, um, and we came in just about what we were paying for the actual electricity itself. When we combine it with U.I.'s transmission rates, that's where the two come together. So it's a transmission rate from U.I., that's the expensive part, not so much the electricity. The electricity's somewhere around eight cents a kilowatt.
That's what I figured, 'cause I thought it'd be about seven, eight cents.
But it's the transmission from U.I. that's the higher part.
I don't know, um, this is where we wanted to have a discussion about...
Yeah.
A human, like an H, HR adding.
See, I think, I think that would be more of a, an, an agenda item at our, uh, at our next regular meeting. But I think what, what I think we need to do with purchasing is actually upgrade that position to, you know, be purchasing, risk management, and HR. We have a lot of things that need to be done moving forward, being prepared for Obamacare kicking in. We need the employees to be brought forward with the insurance and their options that they're gonna have. And we also need the town to move forward as being self-insured. In talking to some of the surrounding towns that have this, um, upgraded position, um, I think that, for now, I would leave this department alone, and put it on our next regular agenda for a discussion. And, um, discussion in action, and maybe we can, uh, you know, get some more information on that, and maybe, um, actually upgrade this position to move us forward.
Fran, if I could pick on you. I know they're not, uh, large sums of money, but we've got, uh, utility bills and maintenance costs for Yorga House, the former community center, the former senior center. These buildings are closed now. Are we actually incurring electric bills and maintenance costs for these properties?
Yeah, electric's still, electric's still on. You shut down the, uh, the heating, um, Yorga House is functional, that the heat, we shut the heat, uh, oil windows off, but, um...
But the senior center and what, the old rec center, um...
I mean, we heated it, we had it heated at a low, low, lower temperature, we don't, both of those were winter. I mean, we heated it, we had it heated at a lower temperature, we don't want both of those to weather up. Then we shut it down. And we're not gonna fire them, we're gonna gradually bring everything out, all the boilers.
Yeah, because, well, those charges are, $2,500 bucks a building for empty buildings. That's just maintenance, I assume, is heat. And there's another $1,850 each for electricity, that's what we're budgeting. It's not a king's ransom, but it seems like a lot of money for buildings that are just being waterlogged.
I don't know if that was...
You go back to the 208 account, Joe, and see that the fuel oil was eliminated.
Right, for those three.
For those three buildings, the 208 account took the fuel oil out, so the normal fuel...
But in the 311 account, we've got maintenance. And somewhere else, I saw electricity.
Well, there's still a fire alarm active, we need to have that removed.
Unfortunately, with the buildings being vacant, if there's an issue with a roof, a plumbing issue or something like that, then they told me to be taken care of. I had recommended to Anthony and Mike that we winterize the buildings and eliminate the fuel costs for the coming year. If they become a dormant building, it shifts from, on the insurance policy, to a vacant building, and there's an additional premium for that. So we've, at this point, you know...
I'm convinced.
Okay.
So let's knock them down. Get rid of them. I mean, why are we throwing money away every year for buildings that we're not using? So that's another discussion that...
I'm not having the building all went along. The paint, everything's gonna fall off the wall.
Right, I mean, if you're gonna shut the heat off, you might as well. We either gotta use the buildings or get rid of them.
What Al's suggesting is we consider eliminating.
I'm agreeing with him, because if they're gonna be junked, I'm trying, anything happens there.
Unless we have a use for them.
I thought at one point we were gonna try to rent the senior center out. Somebody wanted to have an event there.
Yeah, that's a possibility, but I mean, council would have to come up with a policy to do that.
There was a few different discussions about using the old senior center, perhaps via the library and Park Rec, I believe, doing some sort of...
Right, when we had our Saturday meeting and Pam, when we talked to Park Rec, Pam said she definitely could use the old senior center for some of her programs.
Right.
So I guess the question is, what programs would be used there? And approximately, how much do you think you would generate based on previous history?
And I know the library...
Of those programs.
Right, and I know the library also wanted to use a portion of the building for book sales. They had some other ideas for revenue streams for the library. And then we could possibly also rent out a section as a hall. Has a kitchen and the front hall space. So I think there was a few different ideas floated out there.
Also, I think the senior center is on this historical list, and we'd have to check that.
But I agree with Alan Joe on the brick building, the rec center building. That, I think, should be looked at, as far as either taking down...
So what's the sound of the center school building? Then that must be an abandoned building or a vacant building.
Oh, that's on the historical list.
And we're paying, so we're paying a higher insurance rate for that?
I'm sorry, which building?
The center school.
Was the center school.
The old town.
The gray building? Yeah, they know that's vacant, that's been vacant for years, so...
So is that a higher insurance premium?
No, currently, there's not additional premium for that old blue building now.
Okay.
Right, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have called it the center school. People don't know that it was the center school.
For our next, for our next meeting, could you get the insurance cost for the old center school, the old community center, the senior center, and the Auger House? Can you break the...
Sure, it's all in policy, but I'll...
No, I know, but there must be, can you break it down?
Sure, I'll contact, see if...
To see once...
We told them that the buildings are cold stored, so that's why it's eliminating any additional premiums. At this point, that the buildings are being used. But I can definitely get them, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure, but line item 201, and I'm still in 4136. Miscellaneous all town buildings, $6,000. Is that just a common item everybody uses?
Yeah, typically, the way that the office supply is worked is that it is an item that is universal across everybody's coffee cake, burger, or pencil. It's charged essential services, and any that you need for your department is charged to your department.
What are the four municipal vehicles that we have now?
We have town engineer vehicle, it was only three. Town engineers...
Says four in the book. Unless I'm reading it wrong.
That's the green truck.
Negative.
Negative.
Right, it's the car fifteen, the Crown Vic, the town engineers, old police Chevy, and then the building officials, old police exploit.
So you only have three?
Correct.
But you got four in this one.
The gowns predicated on form sale or...
No, the gowns are adjusted to the actual use, so it's based on the print. So that's just gonna get changed from four down to three when we get rid of the old green car.
Oh, the green car that left?
Yeah, the green car died.
Yeah, that's what I, okay, thank you.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
There's one item under 320, other contractual, the claw fee for SCROG of $1,100.
Mm-hmm.
We are now participating with SCROG, the cooperative. And that $1,100 may be decreased, either down to 500 or to zero. And I'll know at next month's meeting what the actual cost will be. We're gonna be regionalized with SCROG now. And they may be picking up all of their heat for the first year, but that'll be determined at next month's meeting.
But is it definitely going to no more than $500?
No more than 500, and it could be potentially zero.
Okay, so why don't we move that down to $500? I'll make the motion.
Second.
Moved by Council Fawnin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Do you wanna count numbers when we make these motions?
Yeah.
I could read your mind, Anthony.
How much of a mill is that, Anthony?
We're breaking even now, we're good.
4136, 320.
Free $600.
We're getting there.
There's a motion.
Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Esposito?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
So on the cleaning fee, I know this building still has the cleaning contractor, correct? Have we looked at, considering what we did for the libraries and the community center, going to, you know, a person rather than a cleaning contract? Because we saved money doing that on those buildings, so is that a possibility here?
Suppose it's possible, we just hadn't considered that at this point. Yeah, it's...
How long was this contract that you did with the cleaning company? Was it just an annual contract that we did last year?
I believe it's a three-year base, but I'll double check for you, let you know for Tuesday night. And then after three years, I think it's renewable by year, but I will double check that for you.
Okay.
311, Facilities Maintenance. What's the grounds maintenance for $1,000?
It's a placeholder if we get charged. Fran, do you charge off some of your hours to...
No, just the sewers I go up to.
I'm sorry, what?
No, just the sewers I go up to.
Well, the customer needs to do the crack sealing, you charge it there, and the repairs on the outside of the building.
Oh, yeah.
Is that labor or materials?
Materials.
I thought Franny was getting paid on the side. $1,000 at this building, $1,000 at that building. Nice. Put it toward, put it toward salt.
The other thing too, that you're talking about these vacant buildings, you've got quite a bit of money in there for maintenance if it's required on any of those buildings. That that dollar amount potentially go away if the building is sold or whatever.
Yep.
Same thing like we do with the heat for those buildings.
Who's doing the electrical and the plumbing and all the miscellaneous work? Do we still have the...
Currently, it's with Tri-State out of New Haven.
Electricity pass control, right?
Pardon?
What was the name, I'm sorry?
Tri-State Maintenance out of New Haven. And we just did a new bid, so July 1, we have some... A lot of local businesses applied this time, which was good. So we'll have some new plumbers, electricians, and so forth, starting July 1. Ron Radezino also does a lot of work. He did some work here in the Town Hall, which is out of Fran's budget. Plugs and lights that need to be changed, whatever broken pipe.
That comes out of Public Works for Town Hall?
Well, he's the part-time person that we approved last year, correct? That's who got that, yeah.
Yeah, so he does a lot of work, certainly here at our building and I'm sure other buildings too.
Under 320, other contractual, what's the other town buildings, sorry, miscellaneous contractual work?
There's nothing there. Oh, well...
The $2,000 for miscellaneous contractual work, under the 320 at town.
Plummin', heating, anything that needs to get done. Sometimes our cost of our H-Back repairs here in the Town Hall exceed the budget number, so it's just kind of a placeholder.
Ready to move on to Town Clerk, 4140. 4140, Town Clerk.
So to be consistent, I'll ask the Town Clerk for the same homework assignment. Look at the part-time, and tell us what happens if we don't have one. Thank you.
Lisa, in the 320, I see it says auditor-dash-reflex 1% increase.
The land records by state will have to be audited, indexing every year. So we've had a little, actually, it was a firm that I inherited when I began here years ago. So we have to do that by law.
I was just curious what it was.
Yeah, it's the land records indexing. They live in town, they've been doing it for 35, 40 years.
So you're happy?
Very happy, because we just, it's a flat fee. Other towns charge per instrument, per document, or per page, it would be a lot higher. Could be a lot higher. So we're very lucky.
Any other questions on 4141? There's not really much in there. Al, do you have any other questions on 4141? No. Do you have any other questions?
I have nothing else here, Town Clerk.
Okay. Going to 4141, elections. That looks like the...
Budget was $7,600 for equipment maintenance, and last year we expended $1,096 with a budgeted amount of $6,200, if I'm reading that correctly.
Is that that new state law, that we have to do the voting machines now?
Yes.
Why was there such a difference between what we budgeted last year and what we spent?
I can answer that, Anthony.
I think the state used to pay for it.
When we went from the lever voting machines to the tabulators, there were hava federal funds. And so for the, since 2007, the Secretary of State's office has been paying for this for all the towns throughout the state of Connecticut.
Right, and we just had to agree to hire a contractor for the...
This is the, yeah, the hava, the federal funds have dried up now, so all the towns are becoming responsible for paying.
So although we got away with it last year, we're gonna get it back this time.
We've gotten away with it for seven years.
Okay.
So now, we have to fund it. It's all 169 cities in town, so...
It's good of the state to pass that out of those.
So do you automatically budget for primaries? And if there's not a primary, then we're okay? Then we get the, we have overage in the account?
Right, they do not spend the money. Sometimes we put it in... I mean, Dick Atria used to take it out and put it into contingency. But this year we're anticipating there may be some in August. To move it forward on the Republican side, some of the Senate seats. We're not sure. But it's looking like there may be. I mean, it's up to you, but if the primaries occur, then we have to fund them.
Right.
I mean, my suggestion would be if you wanted to take it out of their budget, place it in contingency and to move it back. But I wouldn't cut the cost completely.
What is the second registrar? It says two registrars and underneath it says registrar 1664, an hour, I assume. What is that for, deputy registrar?
Or is that just extra hours?
Yeah, they actually do work at the pole. They pay the hourly rate. The monthly, slightly, I guess, is to cover their office work done. Whether on the poles, they actually get paid the hourly rate.
Any other questions on... Move on to town attorney, 4150.
Anthony, on the food part of it, food. What did they say last year? What did they... For the food for the election, for the November election?
For just November?
Yeah. And I'd like to know what the food for budget referendum was also, and food for the primaries. Can you tell me what last year's was?
Yeah.
Usually you put it in here.
Chinese.
I can get a detail of the essential for it.
Thank you.
For the 12, 13, 15, please?
Yes, please, for those three items. Four items, I guess. No, three, sorry.
We're always over budget on our legal.
That's why I'm holding up this year to 65.
Yeah, I see that.
And is the attorney's retainer, the $2,800, that's based on attending two meetings a month? Or how is that?
I believe there's actually a written document, so I don't... I'm not sure.
Okay.
My understanding is it covers things like opinions requested, everything but litigation, which is billed on an hourly basis. I could be wrong, but that was my recollection.
Is that retainer an actual number?
Correct.
Yeah, it's...
So if we didn't ask him a question, he still gets it?
Correct.
Ask more questions.
Feel you're giving your money's worth.
Thirty-three thousand dollar question. So if you really think about it, we don't need a town attorney at every meeting, do we?
We talked about that some years ago. And in fact, I think I raised that question. Somebody gave us an analysis of what it would save us and the cost savings was really nominal. The benefit of having somebody here to answer questions when they came up didn't seem to merit the savings. I don't remember the numbers. It was several years ago.
Good joke, huh? Yeah, you're here.
My rate's a lot better than theirs.
So you're thinking we should leave that alone, then?
It's... I think I remember... The retainer is very good in the hourly rate.
I think if we cut the meetings in half, we didn't cut the retainer in half. It's funny how that works. All right. So I guess we'll move on to permanent project building committee, 4151.
I think we can skip this one.
4152, Al's favorite, technology.
Technology.
4152.
The big money's in 317 and 320.
Right.
That's where all the costs are.
So when we were... When we talked to the Board of Ed on that Saturday, and maybe Anthony knows, if they were... If we somehow were able to get it so they could handle some of the issues... Well, they would have to be able to access our system. We still have certain providers that we have contracts with. But day to day, they can... If they were able to access, right, remote access to...
You're correct. I mean, a lot of the items you see in here, the increase in the 317 this year, as you recall, we were gonna hook onto that Nutmeg Network.
Right.
So there's an increase in cost for that. The GIS maintenance, something that they could not perform for us. The lands and licensing, they could not perform for us. The only thing you're really focusing on, if they were able to work with us, would be in that 320 account, that $5,000, the first number. That's basically when we have to call somebody in to do things that are outside of my scope. I try to do as much of it as I can myself, but there are a lot of things now, and more and more every day, there's problems with technology. Every department's technology-driven.
Right.
Today, we had a hard drive thrown down. So we had to manually move files over and so on. So there's... Every department in town, in town-wise, is obviously very technology-driven. Whether it's GIS or parking rep with server, it's getting more and more complex every day and definitely exceeding my scope of my expertise. And what would take me three hours to do, would take somebody with intelligence, one hour to do.
And the 317, are there any grants available for any of that, or no?
Well, we got the grant to hook into the Nutmeg Network. You have front costs, you have the hardware costs.
And that's only gonna be dropped in certain areas anyway, right?
Right. So there's a drop at the middle school complex that we're gonna tie the town hall in stuff. There's a drop at the ambulance building with the fire chief's offices. And there's a drop at the police station with the 911 center. It's three drops to town.
Are they charged by the gig?
Exactly. We're actually gonna try and... We're actually gonna plug into them the... Because D L T Williams has the fiber in it for the school functions, we're going to put a device that's gonna allow us to use... Currently using Comcast for Pam's internet, to put it tied into the school part of it, for the whole CDN, other regulatory issues. By putting this one device in, we're able to split the traffic up so that we can put Pam onto the Nutmeg Network as well. So that's important because, if you recall, in the upcoming year, can you get the catalyst, the night of her capital replacement of servers and PCs? By putting her on the Nutmeg Network, we're gonna eliminate her servers. And she's gonna live off of our server, because it's all fiber-connected. So we're gonna save a lot of money, probably $10,000 to $15,000 per server times two to accomplish that. So there's some efficiencies by going onto this Nutmeg Network, and that's one that comes to mind, where we can separate the traffic that's gonna be out of that school. The education folks versus the recreation folks can be able to tie into the Nutmeg Network at fiber speed that's, you know, far exceeding capable. Let's get back to Al's original plan. You're right. If they were able to... And part of the thing, too, now, to get into the fiber world, which is moving, they're versed very heavily in the fiber world, and managed switches versus unmanaged switches, they can be controlled remotely. So, you know, again, it's getting more and more complex on our little network here. The opportunity is definitely there for them to assist. And I mean, I've been involved in meetings over the years with prior managers and superintendents and everything else, about trying to establish that relationship. And it seems to get to a point and never really go over. So I'm gonna approach it with, there's a new person in charge of there, in charge of technology, and sit down with Mike and I'll settle it down with Bruce, and see if we can work something out.
So just 'cause I'm curious, you're the finance director.
Yeah.
But if a computer goes down in this building, everybody calls you first?
Definitely.
That's good.
It's not only this building. It's town-wise.
Good to know.
No, he's also data processing manager.
Data processing manager.
Lisa's always got a, you know...
I don't want you to think we're bugging, you know, the finance director. We're bugging the data processing manager on that one.
So we should pursue that, then? They might be able to fix things, then, from... I mean, they said from...
Remotely.
Right.
By putting these managed switches in, they're gonna be remotely accessible. So they can get into our network now, with the game, you know, the access code and everything else. So... And I'm not quite sure what the... What's always brought to a certain point and never really materializes. So again, I think maybe Mike and I, Scott and Bruce Williams, maybe if we can rekindle that possibility and get them on board.
Any other questions? Moving on to 153, ethics commission. I don't think there's really anything there.
There's no papers.
4210, police department.
Why is there such a disparity between budgeted for 1314 and projected? It's like half the amount.
The 101 line is missing. Built at the very top number, they have a budget investment for the current...
By design?
No. If you go to the blue book, there's a number in there of 1,448. But when you get to the... It was printed, the batch sheets were printed up, there was no number in there for the rest for current year full-time.
What was it, 1,448?
1,448, 037.
So you have to add that to their total request?
Well, no. Just on the projected for this year.
The blue book has it correct that the batch sheets at the time did not have any.
Chief, does the 101 account as shown here, does that envision the officers that are coming on board, the laterals you're interviewing to hire now?
The 101 account shows that the officer who was terminated...
His name is still in here, isn't it?
No, that's...
No.
No.
Is it different? It refers to the same last name?
That's the wrong one.
Okay.
The 101 account, the reason why we didn't fill it out, because the officer that was terminated, that shows four, four and a half months of salary. And then the officer that retired, we didn't fill that position yet, so we have to fill that with a grade A. And we have no idea when that position is gonna be filled. We're gonna process the donate goods right now.
All right. But my question to you is, in these salary projections for this coming year...
Are they in here? Yes.
The money is in here?
Yes.
Okay. That was my question.
Okay.
Thanks. Yeah. Account 313, that was a motorcycle officer setup. You have a $5,000 figure for two motorcycle officers outfits. As I understand it, that's being requested because one officer's already retired and the other is about to retire. So the two officers that were, I guess, qualified to use the motorcycle are either gone or going to be gone. And the request is for replacements, but I don't really know if they use the motorcycle.
Yeah. So I know last year we got... We eliminated that, the...
Fully. Well, we didn't need it because we had two guys last year.
Because I thought in last year's discussion, the motorcycle didn't get used, and we actually asked about the possibility of selling it.
Yeah. Then we found out that if you sold it, the money had to go back to the federal government. So we would gain nothing if we sold it.
So is it...
Well, we wouldn't have to insure it, and if we don't use it, we don't have to maintain it, and...
Yeah. I don't know if there's a line item in here for the motorcycle, so I won't worry about that right now. The question is, do we wanna buy two outfits that cost $5,000?
Not if we don't use the motorcycle. I mean, if we didn't use it last year and we got rid of it, and we're thinking of selling it, I don't know why we would equip two officers with uniforms.
Well, the reason we're not really using it, as you know, Chris Mato was an operator. He was a certified operator. And the person that... The second person is Nublo. He's assigned to the record room. So he works Mondays through Friday. Basically used, because I'm shorthand, it's basically used for ceremonial. If you wanna cut it down to one, we could live with one outfit. And what I would do is, you have to go to training. Everything in the police world, as in the fire world, is certification. You have to go wait for five days to get trained on Mondays through Friday, how to ride a bike. Even though they currently hold the license to ride a bike, they still have to get trained. We certainly put a person that's fairly new on the department, hopefully already has a number of years out of that person. And try to use it more on the day shift. We have extra men in the department at that particular time. So I could live with one outfit. I think I mentioned that at the budget workshop also.
I can justify it if it's being used for public safety. I can justify it if it's being used for public safety, but if it's possibly being used just for ceremonial and that's the extent of its use, I really don't see me expend anything for it. That would be my deal.
Right, I, yeah. And I would even, I would then sell it and even if we don't get the money for it, but at least we get it off the insurance. I mean, we just, you still save money by selling it, even if you don't get the proceeds from the sale of it, if we're only going to use it for the parade.
What year is that motorcycle, chief?
Has to be at least ten years old.
Top of rap?
And again, the reason we're really not using it for public safety is because that particular person is assigned to the record room.
Chief, doesn't that, wasn't the motorcycle bought to go into areas where you couldn't get in with a car or something? If you were looking for somebody or something? I thought it was.
We're using it basically to go to the shops and centers, patrol the shops.
Wasn't it used in the property, in farm property along Route twenty-two?
No, you can't use it on, I don't think you can use it on.
Was it not certified?
No.
I thought it was, I thought it was bought for going into.
It's a Harley.
Sorry. Thought it was bought for some other reasons.
Top of rap.
All right. Well, before we move on, I mean, I'm definitely going to move to one of the one outfit. What is the consensus, one or two? All right. And I'll move to eliminate twenty-five hundred and twenty dollars from account three thirteen, which would be one uniform setup for a motorcycle officer.
Second.
How much Joe? I'm sorry.
Twenty-five twenty. Twenty-five twenty. It's one outfit, leaving one outfit.
Moved by Counselor Fawnin, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
In line item three nineteen on tuition reimbursement, that seems to be the lower of this account number. Exactly how does tuition reimbursement work? Do they get paid for the whole course? Or is it just a certain, up to a certain dollar amount?
It's whatever they put out of the box.
We had this discussion, unfortunately you couldn't be here, but we did touch on this. And it, it does kind of lend itself to abuse with people that are planning to retire, taking courses, courses and training that will help them in their new job rather than being an officer here in town. But contractually, party has no choice. They've got to reimburse them because that's, that's what the contract provides.
But it's the contract that's expiring June thirtieth, correct?
Yep. Chief, are these lease payments for cars for convicts, those are the ones we got two years ago? And the two Ford X cars, was that last year?
Yep.
So these are existing vehicles that we have in operation now?
Correct.
Okay.
If I remember correctly from the Saturday meeting, that you had enough money to either outright purchase one vehicle?
Yeah, that was our plan. The money that we're going to save for the officer who's terminated.
Right.
And also for the officer that we have to replace. He's been retired since January twenty-third. So there's already eight weeks that we have to pay for his salary. But I think the money got moved from, I think it's a bit into of the capital. And it was a discussion whether to buy two cars.
On a lease.
Or buy one car outright, if you remember that discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were trying to, we were just trying to move some of that money or hold off that purchase and obviously try to flood the hole with that in this year's budget.
I'd rather see him buy one car outright.
Right. Then lease. Did you get the automobile mileage?
Um, I don't know. What animal is it?
This is.
Territory. You got that today?
Yeah.
So the savings from.
They're all low mileage, only driven on Sunday.
You know, leasing was two years ago and we had a real shortage of cars. We had four cars for a really feasible amount of money. I don't think they're quite that desperate right now. Probably buying a car that we don't have ongoing payments for the next four or five years on, it's probably a good idea.
Right. But that would be this, this current budget year that we're in, correct? Yeah.
Yeah, I would rather outright buy one than lease.
Do we still have that ability or did you say you moved that money somewhere else or?
He put it in the contingency.
It's there.
They moved it over to capital just to take out the police department.
July first capital money. The thought was, as management mentioned, to try to save some of that money to cover the other holes that we have in the current year. And then if you put a thirty-five thousand dollar number in next year's CFP, so July first you can go buy that.
So what's the flavor? Because actually if we do get one more car, we're almost back on schedule. When we're doing three, two, three, two, three, two, outright buy one, when we're done with it.
Great.
If we buy one more car outright, we're almost back on schedule.
Yeah, looking at the list of cars, I think we've got, I don't remember the exact number, there's a fair number of cars under a hundred thousand miles, which getting close to that is the point where they start getting a little risk for patrol work.
Yeah, I mean, you got car fourteen, car fifteen, car forty-nine, all over a hundred thousand, car three.
I think altogether I counted fifteen cars and roughly half of them were high mileage. The other half were decent.
Car one's got two hundred and sixteen bucks.
That's a cheap car. Two hundred and sixteen thousand?
Yeah, two hundred and sixteen. You know where he is all the time. You can see the smoke.
Am I reading this one or is it up a hundred and sixty-five thousand over the last year? The budgeted for twenty thirteen fourteen was three million twenty-eight?
Yep.
And we're three million one ninety-three?
No, one seventy-nine, his manager.
One seventy-nine?
Yeah. There was a cut in general overtime. There was a general cut of roughly twelve thousand dollars.
Now, you have to look at the pension and social security. That's, that's the big jump. And again, the twenty thousand dollars for a car in this year's budget right now, is not in last year's budget because they took it out of capital. So between the pension and social security and the twenty thousand dollars for the lease, it's close to a hundred thousand dollars.
Yep. So the pension, the pensions up that much because we had so many retirees or?
Yeah, the annual required contribution that the pension committee reviews every November when the actuary came in, I believe it went from thirty-five point seven to thirty-nine point one percent of salary. And that was a function, as you, as you mentioned, of two things. The assets decreased because of a couple of lump sum payouts and the liabilities increased due to all the extra duty work from the R eighty Y D project. So that brought the funded status of the pension plan down to about fifty percent funded status and resulted in a higher ARP for the shift.
When, when the guy's on Route eighty, so where a private contractor hires an officer, is the, is the pension?
Charge.
It's figured into just the hourly rate though?
Correct.
Not what it does to their gross salary and what it does to our side of the pension?
Exactly right. We add three things to the cost. We add the pension, we add the financial benefits here, and we add workers' comp. So it's just a direct transfer of those costs from the taxpayer to the contractor who's using those services. But you're right, your point is valid that if a officer, let's say, is making sixty as normal and then goes to eighty one year, plus the duty work, the actuary figures anything like eighty going forward and higher from there versus sixty going forward. So it bumps up his overall final liability and does have a lingering effect on the ARP that the town has come up with, right?
Is it, is it union, chief? Is it, is it regulated that it has to be a police officer doing traffic duty? Or?
No, it's up to the contractor.
It's up to the contractor?
We don't have a manhole clause. A manhole clause, a lot of towns have it. If they're twelve inches from a curb and they open a road, they have to hire a police officer. We don't have a contractor.
They decide whether they want to. Okay.
Yeah, they're kilovattores, same twenty-two four electricity, it's pretty much the same. So I, you got any more for police? You're good. Moving on to fire, four two two zero.
We're projecting an increase in maintenance, but you have to do cost projections this year. What's? There's a projection of an increase already in equipment maintenance for this year?
It's a whole work.
Anthony, can you just explain, and I might have missed it because I wasn't at that Saturday meeting, but we pay a lease to the firehouses, correct, as they're volunteers. So they own the firehouses. We lease them. And then we pay the utilities on them, the gas or oil, and then the electricity. And insure, like insurance, who pays that? Us or them?
Town.
Town pays the insurance also. So, so do they pay anything on the, I mean, do they do the maintenance part?
They maintain the buildings.
Okay.
Repairs, things along that line. If the furnace were to go out, the company replaces the furnace. Any kind of maintenance on the buildings, the company's responsible for.
Okay.
Company three, for example, the past year they had an underground fuel tank they replaced with an above ground. They paid for that. That's the thing. Any repairs to the building, the company's there.
Okay.
Cost of it is the same thing if you drive by Station One on November day. The facade of the building was recently renovated, but if you look at the doors, the doors are kind of in deplorable condition. The company themselves, with the fundraising that they do, they just stood up hope the other night. They're going to be replacing all the doors on, on their own expectation.
Okay.
Line item three ten, equipment. Maintenance. We have to maintain these trucks just like we do public works.
Chief, the real, the real change from, in this budget from last year is, is the protective clothing of thirty-five thousand dollars, roughly, is that?
It's actually, it's, it's in here and it's also funding that the town is going to seek through state grants.
Okay, but the difference in just simple arithmetic from last year's budget to this year's budget looks to me like we didn't, we didn't budget anything for protective clothing last year?
Uh, there was no money available for protective clothing.
So it was two years ago we got that?
Two thousand twelve, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve.
That's when we came up with about a hundred thousand dollars for that.
Uh, we were able to buy fifty-six sets of gear for, it was like seventy-five thousand dollars.
Okay. So all of that is depleted now or it's, it's been used by people, so we need to replenish it. For the new guys.
Correct. We, we've had an influx of people since that time. That we're, we're using older gear. We took on new members. That we had gear that's kind of off the shelf, that doesn't meet the standard anymore. And because of that, because of lack of physicals, last August I shut membership up and it's still shut off today. We don't accept volunteers.
We don't accept volunteers.
But would you say that you're full?
I'm sorry?
I mean, what, what's the magic number for being full as a volunteer fire department?
Well, unfortunately, I'm in a position where I kind of have two guidelines, because in the bylaws from the company, each company is allowed fifty members, Counselor, which technically, financially, we can't afford, but it's there. So we have, in the books right now, a hundred and twenty-nine members, split between four companies.
So, I mean, I remember, you know, I sat here when I believe it was Kenny Newbig came in and I, you know, I remember coming, when he came in and got the thousand dollar stipend because membership was down. And then we implemented the pension because membership was down. So apparently it worked and you've got your membership, you know, back up there. So, you know, as a town, because, so we're looking at, and that's going to lead into one of my questions, why is the pension all over the place? Like, in two thousand eleven, twelve, it was actual a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in two fifteen. Twelve thirteen was a hundred and eighty-seven. Budgeted in thirteen fourteen was a hundred and fifty-nine. And this year is a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So how does that, how are we coming up with that? Is it just on the members and who did so many hours and what's turned in?
Anthony, I'll explain the split.
Yeah, I mean, the pension calculation is derived from the actuary. So again, once a year he comes for the pension committee to remember, it's also what he has to put in for the subsequent fiscal year. If you recall, I don't know if you were on the council, but we had, there was a change made to some of the pension assumptions about a year or so ago. And for some of the plans, it resulted in a higher annual required contribution, and that resulted in a little lower for this current year for the fire plan. The reason why it's up from one fifty-nine roughly to one seventy-five next year is the fire commission came before the books probably about four or five years ago and had requested a graduated increase in the multiplier by fifty cents per fiscal year. So there's a built-in, I believe it's, at the time it was, again, it's dependent on the census of the people in the department at that particular time, which drives the actuarial valuation. But it's built-in probably about a ten thousand dollar annual increase in that pension plan due to that fifty cents per year increase in the multiplier that the council agreed to, again, probably about four or five years ago, which is due to expire, I think, fourteen, fifteen, the final year, when I believe it was twenty-five dollars, I'm trying to think of that. Again, historically, it started out about fifteen dollars and went to seventeen twenty-one and fifty cents per year, graduated over the years. That's why is that increase this year, some of it's driven by the built-in increase of the multiplier that the council agreed to, and then some of it's just based on a function of who's in the department. At every June thirtieth, the valuation's done, and depending on the age of the people and the makeup of the people, the actuary computes the valuation and gives us a number.
Okay. So getting back to the numbers, then, so, so would say company, company one can have fifty people in it?
Each, each company by their bylaws can have fifty, correct?
Okay. Now, are the companies evenly divided in area?
From a, from an operational standpoint?
Yes.
Yes. Do we have equal number of people per company? Absolutely not.
Okay. So by their own bylaws, you're not full?
Correct.
But you would, what, what happens when you get to a hundred and fifty and one more person wants to volunteer?
Got to be by the bylaws.
Okay. How, how does, Anthony, how does the pension work? So volunteer fireman has to work, has to show up so many meetings or something a year?
There's a criteria, you have to get fifty points per year to get qualified year of service. The first half to twenty-five, the first twenty-five points, you have to make a percentage of your company's calls. So if you're a member of company one, two, three, a certain percentage of those companies' calls, if you've made that percentage, you get the first twenty-five points. Then the second twenty-five points is one point for every meeting, drill, fundraising, other activities you can do. So the goal is to have somebody who not only goes to calls, but also goes to meetings and drills and gets trained. I'm versing, you want somebody who's going to meetings and drills and not going to calls. So it's meant to get somebody who's encompassing the whole situation, getting the meetings and trains, going to drills, and then going to do the calls as well. So if you get the fifty points, twenty-five from each of those disciplines, then you get a year of qualified service for the pension. And when you get a year of qualified for the pension, you then get the stipend on top of that as well.
That's the thousand dollars, I was just going to ask that question, okay.
And you see it in two spots, because the way the stipend was set up was, at the time, that was a function of the state law changing around two thousand that allowed the towns to give a thousand dollars of tax benefit to volunteer fire and non-stationary. And the decision at the time was, well, if you have a younger member who doesn't have a thousand dollar tax bill, you're not really getting him the full benefit. So rather than give it off to tax bill, the decision was made to give them a thousand dollar stipend. You have two ways to take this stipend. You can take it as cash today, as a payroll check, as what you see in the one-on-two account, or you can take it as a contribution to a four oh one A pension plan, as we see in the three-point. So theoretically, a person could have two pensions, a defined benefit plan as the traditional pension, and a defined contribution plan, a four oh one A contribution of a thousand dollar annual stipends going in over their career.
So the stipend and the contribution, these are just estimates because people can decide what they want each year?
Yeah. People don't typically change. For a person who typically takes it as payroll, they usually stay payroll, or a person that takes it and invests, it stays invested. The opportunity is there for them to go back and forth if they want to. We don't encourage that, it's confusing on the bookkeeping end of it, but typically, it's a pretty, about a half and half split. Half people will take it as payroll and half will take it as pension contribution.
So then, if I read this correctly, between the stipend as the four oh one contribution and the stipend as part-time wages, you're estimating that you're going to pay ninety volunteers and there's, there's a hundred and twenty-nine, so some of them don't make the fifty points, so that's why they don't get anything?
Right, correct.
Okay. Phil, how many sets of protective clothing are you asking for the thirty-five thousand dollars?
Immediately, right now, I mean fourteen sets, that about twenty-five to twenty-seven hundred dollars each, right now, that I can't buy.
How much are they, copies?
Twenty-seven.
Two thousand seven hundred. And that's individually fit.
Twenty-seven.
Is it going?
He hasn't yet. Thirty-five thousand, short, he's short on the set.
That's what, thirty-seven, eight and a half.
On the three nineteen, on the professional development, the annual fire marshal inspector classes at five hundred dollars to maintain certification, and maybe the building official knows what happened there, but back when I was maintaining my building official license, you know, the fire marshals were at the same seminars that, some of the same seminars that we were at, and it was all to maintain your, you know, your licenses. And the sixteen cent per thousand dollar value on building was funding this all, and they, you know, you used to have to pay for it, and the towns paid for it, and now those meetings were all free. So what happened to the, I know the fire marshals and the building officials finally split up because they were like cats and dogs anyway, but what, what happened to the, maybe Tom knows, the sixteen cents doesn't fund fire marshals anymore?
Actually, it's twenty-six cents.
See, I'm dating myself. But I knew this school was the center school, too, so.
Yeah, and I did. No, it's, it's still, it's still fun, and there are still some joint seminars, but it does still fund.
So, so maybe this is a specific class or something that a fire marshal has to go to?
Johnny, would you?
Well, along the classes, now that they are not in with the building department, so we have to pay for them. If we go to State Fire Academy, usually like sixty dollars, but a lot, a lot of people now, they hire outside people to do the classes.
Okay.
And they could be two, three hundred dollars. And right now, we're not going to those classes.
So they're not, well, they're by the bird. Thank you.
Yeah, just a note, for fourteen sets, twenty-seven hundred, be thirty-seven, eight for fourteen sets.
The, in your capital plan is where the turnout gear is in the capital budget.
Okay. All right.
That's what the chief's referring to, the off-taking out of grants, the sixty thousand dollars request to buy turnout gear out of the capital.
So what's this thirty-five thousand for technical equipment, then? That's not turnout gear? That's something separate?
Typically, it is separate.
It's called personal protective clothing, boots, helmets, gloves, hose, and other capital-type safety equipment. So why is it here and why is it in the capital budget?
Unfortunately, that's just how it's written up. Historically, if you look back, you had previous years in the budget, there were two accounts that were labeled the same, and we split those up. Technical equipment at four oh five is typically larger equipment. For example, replacement hose, that we haven't had money for in the last couple of years, we actually took those out of service. It's replacement boots, it's replacement gloves, it's replacement helmets, it's the larger expenditures that are used on an annual basis.
So this is not turnout gear in the operating budget here? The turnout gear is under the capital?
The, the large quantity of purchase, yes.
Okay.
That, that would be requested under a state grant.
Yeah, I get that. Chief, how do you get at this thirty-five thousand dollar figure that you have in your operating budget?
I'm sorry?
The thirty-five thousand dollar figure that's in your operating budget, that was twenty-five thousand dollars last year?
Yep.
How do you arrive at that number?
Anthony, what'd we spend in the four oh five?
Last year it was sixteen, year before it was fifteen-nine, and then put into the budget.
As of January, it's nine thousand, added the twenty-five.
I'm sorry, that nine was what, actually expended or projected to June?
Actual through.
Through January, it says in here.
So, if I may?
Yeah, please.
From the twenty-five to thirty-five thousand, we're projecting twenty-five this year, we went to thirty-five.
Right.
It's because we're trying to replace all the hose that we don't have any of. So if we go to the fire and we use hose, we have to dry it out for three days, we have none to put on the trucks. And then we have hose testing every year, and we did have some fail this year and we haven't replaced it.
And so how much hose are we buying, or do you want to buy?
Chief? I'm sorry?
How much hose is it that you need to buy?
I'd have to look back at my inventory, I can't tell you that right now. Anthony, on that four oh, on the four oh five?
Yeah.
Tell me what's encumbered right now of that twenty-five thousand dollars.
Thirty-five hundred dollars.
Encumbered?
Thirty-five cents. I have to buy on there, including, have to buy, for that, buy some new saws, come out of that. Again, as the chief mentioned, any larger item. The two oh two account that he has is typically for the smaller dollar item, and the four oh five is for the larger dollar items. We had to replace some roof saws, hose, as the commissioner mentioned, ladders, anything that is more significant expenses come out of the four oh five bottom line.
Would it make sense, then, maybe if we could get a breakdown on that for next Tuesday? Because I thought the thirty-five thousand was for the turnout gear.
Right.
It does say protective clothing. So I, that, that's a big expenditure. I'd like to see a breakdown on exactly where it's going.
And Chief, are all the tires up to date?
Yes.
As long as they are done.
Chief, I don't know where I heard this from, but I thought I heard somewhere during the year that our department donated hose to somebody, I don't even know who. Is that true?
It was a small department in a very rural section of Vermont with the approval of the Board of Fire Commissioners.
So we had no hose, but we donated some anyways?
Three, it's three-inch hose that I took out of service because in accordance with the NFPA standard, any hose bought before nineteen eighty-four, we could not use, whether it passed the test or not.
So we donated old hose?
Correct, absolutely.
Anthony, how's the building rental work? Are you looking at something else?
I'm good.
Is it so much for square foot? Because, you know, looking at it, it seems like we're never exactly right. And I would think it would be a square foot thing, and we should be exactly right.
No, because what happens is there is a, there's an offset. For, previously it was a quarter of the fuel level bill, now it's their phone bill comes off of that, and if they have toll calls, it comes off of that. So it's not the number you see verbatim in here, there's, there's an offset. If, if the company has their own phone number, it's billed to the town, but we backcharge them. So again, if they have toll calls, it comes off and along that line. It's not, I mean, how the lease numbers got derived, quite honestly, is a mystery of the ages. If you turn back to clock fifty years. If you turn back to clock fifty years ago, there's no rhyme or reason, it's not based on number of apparatuses, number of square feet, it's a number that's been there forever in each of the three instances, and it's kind of just equally increased over time. There's no, there's no magic number to how it's calculated, to be honest with you.
So for what's budgeted, we're going up about five hundred bucks this year over last year on building, building rental?
I believe it's a two percent.
Counselor, it's also, it's an agreement between the town manager and the fire companies, it's kind of out of our hands.
Because they own the buildings. They have no say, they strictly work with the town manager.
Does the two percent increase over time?
Who owns the buildings?
Fire company.
Each individual fire company owns the building.
Yes.
The associations.
Fire company.
Fire companies.
Three fire companies.
So the three fire companies are completely separate?
They are, sir.
Yes, they are.
Right, so then what about the ambulance, is that building rented also?
It's town.
Town owns it.
And town owns that?
And you bring up a good point, because there are three independent organizations who technically I have no control over, they appoint their own officers, I have no say who becomes an officer, but they appoint the supervisors that supervise the individuals in this town.
Are there rules, are there rules in a town, like, could you start another fire department, if somebody started another fire department?
There's, there's a town code, under section forty of the town code, says that there's.
There's only three allowed?
There shall, no, it says there shall, shall be a Department of Fire Services.
That's it?
All right now.
Now what?
It's a long way, all the way down to the Branford line, you know? So there's like no, so it's not a square foot thing?
Not per apparatus, not per square foot.
Okay, not for this budget, but should we maybe talk about that, or everybody's happy? I guess if everybody's happy, who cares?
It's like a magic eight ball.
Notice how he shoved right up?
Well, are there leases, are there term leases, like this lease?
There's annual leases, manager assigned leases, these are companies.
And I think, I think they were recently redone within the last couple of years, because we had the issue with the oil and so forth, didn't we?
It's been changed over.
So, and I want to be clear on this.
They're fairly new.
I'm not taking on this system, I'm trying to understand.
I, I think you, you raise a valid point, but I think if you look deep into the, the process, I think you'll find that there are bargains at that cost, because if you look at the square footage that is, you know, rental space, and you compare it to what is out there in the industry, I think the costs that we're paying the individual fire company is much less than what you would do if you're gonna rent space from somebody commercially.
So if it's not broke, we'll fix it?
Commissioner, chairman, I'm gonna put you on. You requested fifty-seven thousand in your equipment maintenance. And it looks like the manager approved our cut to fifty.
That was just a general cut that he made.
Right, but, I mean, I'm just asking you, with the fifty-seven thousand number you came up with.
Well, we came up because that's what we did the year before, and it looked like we're projected, we're even gonna be three thousand dollars short.
That's why I'm asking, because I've been to your meetings and I've been listening, so I just wanted you to kind of explain to the council a little bit about the, you know, maintenance.
I, I think one thing that we, we started a couple of years ago that benefits the town in general, and at the Saturday presentation, I kind of put an emphasis on that. Unfortunately, unfortunately, at one point, all the apparatuses were new. Unfortunately, now, because they've all been bought in that very specific short timeframe, they're all aging. Now, I'm not saying the apparatuses are, are not in good condition, but we have enacted a good preventive maintenance program with a local vendor who does a superior job. And as long as we keep that up and try to keep ahead of the repairs, then we're ahead of the game from an apparatus replacement standpoint, that would be very, very costly for the town. So we're trying to stay ahead of the game to do these repairs, therefore, we're putting money into apparatus repair that's needed now. So therefore, you're gonna see an increase in line.
Thank you. So fifty-seven's a fair number in your mind? Is there any further questions on fire?
No.
Oh, are you good?
Yep.
All right, ambulance, four two two five?
How come this subsidy has gone up so high?
There was a sheet that was distributed that was getting us fortunate enough, a couple of things have happened. Our Medicare transports have increased. And concurrently, the government has reduced Medicare reimbursements by two percent. It was originally intended to expire, I think, a couple of years, and it's up to two thousand twenty-three now. So our largest population that we transport, the amount we're getting back has been reduced. Also, the amount of people who have medical insurance went from thirty-four percent two years ago to twenty-six percent. The people that are uninsured went from ten percent to fifteen percent. So our payer mix has been distorted in the fact that our largest population, we're getting a reduced amount of. And people that have medical insurance is actually diminishing, and people that are uninsured is actually increasing. We get about nine percent return on that coming uninsured people. So a couple of things were against us, the Medicare clientele went up from about forty-six to about fifty percent, and the government reduced our reimbursement. And the medical insurance folks went down from thirty-four percent to about twenty-six percent of our transports. And again, uninsured went from ten point four to fifteen point two. So those three factors are what's driving our, our numbers to be, a greater subsidy is needed to bring it to more of a, almost like a balanced budget. It's a big increase number about, but I, I think at the, at the Saturday you mentioned also, the chief, the chief also had to have, in the past eight months alone, there were, you know, free saves for the paramedic service, and, you know, obviously, you can't put a value on, on things like that. So while it may appear to be on the surface a significant increase, it's, uh, it's being, it's being justified. Showing, showing creeping the best.
Is there an outside company that does collections on this? I mean, how is, how does that work?
We have a company called Comstar out of Massachusetts that does the annual billing. And they have a set criteria, they send a bill out, they have criteria where some of the things, and reminder bills out. And then they have a collection agency, I think it's called, that's our first financial resources that they use as a collection agency for people who don't pay the bills.
And our, our collection rate within the industry is very good. And I want to just touch on that, and I'm glad you brought that up, counselor, because as of July first, our ability to maintain the contract extension with Comstar expires. So we have to go to bid again. Now, as I've made, mentioned to the town council in the past over the years, since becoming chief here in two thousand and five, I've seen a number of ambulance billing agencies come and go within the town. When they go, unfortunately, we lose, because they're no longer in operation for the town. So what happens to all that money that was previously out there to collect, we don't see that. So we're in that position again, and because of the town purchasing requirements, we have to go to bid for the service again. So even though we have a good rate with this one particular company, there's other companies out there that, you know, may come under the bidding price of the company that we're having now, that we don't pay a whole hell of a lot to. So if that happens, we tend, tend to lose a little bit. And I know you have your bidding requirements, but this is out of the ordinary. We're not going to bid to buy a truck, we're not going to bid to have a janitorial service. We're, we have a billing service that is predicated upon a rate that's set by the state health department, rates that are set by the federal government, that have to be collected within a specific period of time and followed up. On top of that, we're under state mandate to do all our reporting of patient care electronically. They're called EPCR, so electronic patient care reports. So the, the management information system that we use comes with the ambulance billing contract. So the laptop that our paramedics use as they're taking care of a patient, documenting this, even though the report is ours, and even after maybe the vendor leaves, they're still under federal law to provide us with that data by way of hard copy. But if we change the vendor and they don't use the same EPR system, that opens up a whole can of worms from training individuals to having documentation to get a good data collection. So, you know, we have to go to bid because of the way we operate. But in this case, bidding may not be the right thing to do.
What's the cost of that service?
What's the, the ambulance contract for, for billing?
Four percent of what they collect. When we started billing back in ninety-three, we were paying about ten of the dollars. And as the chief alluded to, we had somebody come in, in the interim, another company, that was around seven to eight percent. And when their contract terminated, and we went with this new folks at four percent, all that money that, that middleman was trying to collect vaporized, because they're not, they're not working for us anymore, so they don't care. So anything that was outstanding, the day we went to Comstar, the last guy wiped his hands, I'm done with you guys, Merry Christmas. So as the chief mentioned, to change billing companies really does have, and, and also going back to that company in the middle there, it was about six to eight months of spartum, getting all the signatures in place of Medicare, getting all the billing addresses changed. We lost a lot of money when that company was starting up, it was a good six to nine months before that company got up, up to speed. So not only did you lose when they left, but you lost in the beginning, just them getting, you know, all this, all this information. As chief alluded to, there's, there's a parameter when Medicare says you gotta bill within sixty days, ninety days, whatever. We lost a lot of money in that, in that startup period, because they didn't have everything in place properly. So there's, there's risks to changing billing companies, I guess that's the bottom line, chief.
What is their collection rate?
Well, good question, they get, of the Medicare folks, they get ninety-seven point four six percent of the money. Of the Medicaid folks, they get ninety-one point six one percent, medical insurance ninety-one point four seven percent. So they're doing really well for what they get, and then the outlier is the uninsured people, they're getting nine percent. But according to the, the folks, when I asked them if that was, you know, maybe more aggressive, nine percent is probably high amongst their people. Not only is the percentage we have fifteen percent higher than that they've seen in other clients they have, but the nine percent is probably even better than what they're getting from the other clients. So while it looks pretty terrible on, on the surface, it probably, you know, may not be as bad compared to other folks. So I think the contract we have with them costs them to get a minimum of eighty percent across the board. They're, they're far exceeding that, again, and the three categories are ninety-one, ninety-one, and ninety-seven. The outlier being the private pay is that the people that have insurance, they probably don't have any money to begin with, so it's like, not easy to collect.
So when we go out to bid, can we put something in the bid specs that say that?
Transition clause or something?
That, or, or the, they have to have the same system that we have, right, you know, so that we don't have this, this issue? Just tight, can't you tighten up the, some, put some of those parameters in the bid?
We ran into this, right, it's kind of like a specialized service.
Yeah, I mean, as the chief mentioned, there are, there are a few folks that provide the service, but they each have a different flavor of billing it, so.
Right.
I, I get what you're saying, about trying to make some kind of transition where you must use the same software. That may or may not work, I mean, there's, there's multiple brands of billing software, billing packages. We have to use the product called Zoll that this Comstar uses. So if you've got in the specs saying you must use Zoll billing software, that may eliminate certain people, so I mean, it's, it's not as easy as it might sound.
Isn't our criteria also the lowest qualified that are?
Responsible, yeah.
So is it a qualification that you have, the software we're using, and we're gonna have continuity of service?
I'm not sure if you can disqualify somebody based on that, but I'm sure that might factor into the safety itself.
This may not be the time for the discussion, but it just seems to me that what Rose is suggesting is, is right on target. There's gotta be a way to write the bid that we don't have these problems in transition. Or you simply don't have the transition, that's gonna cost us six months of collections, that's absurd.
I seem to remember doing this with an attorney or something before that.
So what, what went, what went wrong with the, and, and they do a great job, but what, what was presented? When, you know, they had, when the big debate on, do you stay with, I don't even know what it was, AMR, you know, the mutual, and those guys come through, or did we try and let these guys have a shot at it? And I remember there was a guy from Branford in here saying how they make a million and a half dollars a year on their ambulance, and this thing was gonna be a moneymaker. So we do this, and it's turned out to be not a moneymaker. Is it just the collection rate, or did, what, what went wrong?
I, I don't know how Branford's model works, to be honest with you, I mean, they're running four cars, so they have a lot more volume. I'm not sure what their model they work is and what the actual numbers are. I mean, you could say it's a moneymaker, and so you see the, I can pump it by asking the director over and ask him if he's long for it, if he's liking it, if he has an idea.
Do we give ambulance rides to Evergreen Woods, or does it's Branford?
We do.
Do we do?
They probably have Medicare.
Right, and that's...
So, are they fixed rates too, like they're not, that's a question. So, if you're a private guy, what's the ride cost versus Medicaid? You're a private guy with no insurance.
Private guy, no insurance, doesn't pay the bill, so it's free. That's what it ends up to be. If only 9% of them are paying, the private guy with no insurance basically is free. And if the bulk of your calls are Medicare calls, because they're, if the bulk of your calls are coming, coming out of Evergreen Woods...
Having asked that question, I'll preface it with, for the most important ride of your life, what does it cost?
The state rate, as the chief mentioned earlier, set by the state, for an advanced life support, ALS-1 call at different levels, is $929 plus mileage. There's a mileage charge of $14.27 per mileage. That's the private pay. A person on Medicare, an ALS-1 pays $457 versus $929. And their mileage charge, they're getting $14.27, is $7.16 per mile. A person on Medicaid pays 196 and $2.88 per mile.
So, even if every call is $1,000, let's say roughly, for the same service, level of service?
Right.
If it's $1,000, and most of them are Medicaid, Medicare, you're half, you're getting half of that cost. And then if they're Medicaid, you know, you're getting 20% of the cost. And if they have no insurance, they're free.
So, you have to accept the Medicare or the Medicaid?
Yeah.
So, you don't bill the person for the difference?
No, 100%.
Okay.
The chief gets a report every month of, yeah, to either the people that are billing...
So, we're collecting 9% of the $900 ride, and 90% of the...
Half the cost.
Cheap rides.
Yeah.
So, that's probably what happened to the... In a nutshell.
We should have answered our questions.
No, in situation, no. But again, it's a service that's, you know, if you're one of those few people that life got saved in the last eight months, then it's priceless data.
I said, it's the most important ride of your life.
Right.
I don't think that any, that there's any, I don't, I don't think there's any option or any choice.
So, well, what happens if we don't fund it, don't fund it to this level?
Well, what, what happens is, the ambulance service fund, which is a separate fund, is currently in deficit position. They'll just stay deficit. So, you have the option, if you want to reduce the amount of subsidy going over to that fund, and just keep it in negative position. You know, the orders list any funds that have negative fund balances in the annual report. So, I mean, that's the only, the only detriment would be a negative account, negative fund. But certainly, it's not the end of the world, to be blunt with it.
Well, what eventually happens?
Eventually, it's got, you don't get to a negative fund forever.
Okay.
It's got to be something that turns around. And this year is a turnaround year for this fund, and hopefully, you know...
So, this 300,000 would take it out of the deficit?
Well, I think quite honestly, it's still, the estimate showed about $25,000 deficit still at the end, if you've got $300,000 in there. So, it still, could you use 325, 350? Probably could. So, we put 300 in as a way to kind of mitigate as much of the pain as we can without really bringing, I mean, granted, as it is now, it's a $170,000 increase from the current budget. And, you know, could you go higher? Potentially, you could. But if you funded it less and the negative fund balance stood there, it wouldn't be the end of the world. And if you felt you wanted to bring it down, you know, whichever number you chose, it's not going to happen.
So, this 300 isn't just a one-year deficit? This is...
It's, well, it's a cumulative deficit, because what's happened in, in the current year, I don't have the ambulance budget in front of me, but...
So, the deficit that's there now is from the inception of us instituting the ambulance?
If you, if you look on page 153 of your bulletin, you'll see that if you actually go back to the beginning of the far-left-hand column, this fund has had a positive fund balance of 9,688. If you go back to page 153, the furthest-left-hand column. 153, ambulance service fund.
Yep.
You see the farthest-left-hand column, the very top? This started the 1112 year with a positive fund balance of 9,688.
Right.
After that year, it was negative 30,000. The following year, 1215, it was negative 66,000. I'm projecting it to be a negative 120,000 at the end of this fiscal year. So, the $300,000, you'll notice, but the difference also is, if you go to that billings line, I'm predicting 486 for next year. You see that?
Yep.
Compared to 556 of the current year, that, those numbers have all been revised based on these payer mix questions that I've just added in. So, what happened was, in the current year, we budgeted 556 revenue, we're getting 475. So, there's roughly $80,000 difference right there. So, it's in the last two or three years that the payer mix has really deteriorated and caused this deficit. And, you know, will it be this number going forward? Could our payer mix change the other way? Potentially, it could. I hope it's not this number going forward. I think this is more of an accumulation of, you know, curing the sins in the last couple of years, and then hopefully, it's going to trap, you know.
So, we only did 200. Instead of doing 300, we did 200. That would just make this a negative balance of 113,000.
Right, and so, even at the $300,000, you're showing a negative almost $14,000.
Right, so if we did, if we went from 130, what we have budgeted, to 200,000, made a $100,000 cut, we would have a negative fund balance of roughly 113,000, which is kind of where we are today, on there, in the same range.
Most definitely.
And maybe in a year or two, when debt service goes down and we have more money, we can take care of the problem.
Yeah.
And make it positive.
That's definitely...
That would be a...
Definitely an alternative.
Okay.
All right. Let's move on to our favorite thing, fire hydrants. It's not really much here. Other than, are they going to paint them?
Yes. This came, this came up at the workshop, so I did, I did talk to Larry Bigeman at Regional War Authority. There is a semi-annual maintenance program that they check and make fix, you know, fixes to whatever they have to do. But in addition to that, they have a painting schedule, and he's indicated that the remainder of those that haven't been painted will be painted this year.
And you might want to mention, I know some Eagle Scouts put flags on some of them. I don't know if they did all of them.
All of them were done, Larry.
All of them were done?
Yeah.
Okay. What a company should thank them. 4240 Communications.
This is the dispatch? This is that, that's what communications is, is dispatch.
Right.
You guys get a lot of fire hydrants that fast?
Why, you want to go buy a fire hydrant?
What happens if we don't pay them?
Can they really shut them off?
Don't we have a big wrench? We can turn them on? They're not going to take them out. All right, where are we at?
Now, they did go up 20,000, though.
I know. He didn't offer to give us a deal?
No deal.
He knows it's our water.
Talk about a tariff for sending water through.
That's pretty expensive water. Which is, who are you?
Communications, which is dispatch. 42, 4240.
Does this also reflect the, that we have to move the monitors in here, or no? No?
Still working.
My question, I thought our deal was that meet gap road tower, we use it without a charge. If I'm not mistaken.
I don't know.
Paying the rent of $113 a month. I assumed the amount of tenants on it, and I thought it was going to have a charge.
That's utility, Jack. The rent was free. This is the utility, separate power here, therefore.
Oh.
Your options are correct. The rent was free. This is the power.
This is for the new system that we approved last budget year, correct? So, this would, so this is just the, to, the contract of the update on it?
Correct.
Okay. And how has that system worked in the past year? Do you feel that you've made money off of it, saved time, you know, all the points as to why we installed it?
Well, we eliminated a lot of dead spots in the areas. We saved quite a bit of time as far as dispatch record deep and more efficient. I, I would say we went from 50% efficiency to 100%.
Cut down the rides to courthouse a little bit and all that.
Have more prisoners legally, so a lot more travel.
I saw the McDonald's. 4250.
Did we just split the chief's salary between emergency management and fire department? Or is this a, because I see this has gone up.
Yeah, that's, that's something that...
I think we want to keep that in there, right? Because we get a grant.
Right. What exists right now is that I have to serve as, as emergency management coordinator at this point, not my skill set. So, I've talked to the, to the chief about taking on that role and adding in the stipend there for that.
That's an additional salary, regular salary. It's an addition.
It saves $5,000 if we keep it that way.
What do you mean? How does it save?
Because we get a grant. We get a grant on the fact that we're chief's salary. Right, and on the 4250. Don't we save like $5,000 by having the fire chief through grant or something?
Well, I think if you're trying, in last year, when we got the emergency management performance grant, we were able to claim certain expenses, up to $7,000 we could have gotten in the current fiscal year as a grant, if we were able to justify those expenses as emergency management expenses. When we filed the paperwork, Bonnie, it was still there, we basically just put some cell phone usage, we really only paid about, I think, $200, $300 of the grant. So, we did leave $5,000 of potentially grant expenses that we could have used had we had the expenses to back them up. So, I think that's what you're saying?
Right.
So, we would, if we filed the periods that we're paying, and how the general fund put on a save, the grant fund will get the money back on the save.
So, this is an ongoing grant? It's not a one-time grant or anything? It has been so far.
It's per capita.
Okay.
All right, let's move on to animal control. That, this is my favorite.
Well, this is quite an increase in the dog counts that we don't have anymore.
Yeah, I, I think Mike is going to try to get us more backup information to see how this went from 53,000 to 105,000.
Yeah, we, we had covered it, I think, in the workshop or one of the meetings, and, you know, it's a reflection of the new, you know, the contractual and the negotiation started with Bonnie, came through to go on actual cost versus budget at a 30%. And it, as it turns out, it's, it comes, I think they were using, I can't say because I don't, I wasn't here, but based on call volume, and it comes out to...
Who calls a residence call, or, I mean...
Yeah, and anybody that, you know, I mean, roaming dog, dog down, or it could be, you know, police officers, I get, you know, that see, you know, something that, calls that come into the animal shelter or come into the dispatch and then get, get handled that way.
But I mean, is there any way of tracking it? Because I tell you, that's a big jump.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, we've seen, I've asked, I've asked Laura, who's the director, we met here at the, at the meeting, to come up, go back three years, and let's look at the, let's look at the trend of service calls. And that's really the only thing we can, we can look at in terms of what, what services do we derive from this, this arrangement with, with North, with Branford for services? And, and the one report that we did see was, you know, we had one-third of the calls. But I'd like to see, you know, what the trend is back, back three years.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm still waiting for that. I don't have that yet, but...
In addition to the call volume that's generated by North Branford, can we get there operating like, so, you know, what we're basing that percentage on?
Right.
Right, that's what we've been trying to get.
So, it's over $300,000 to operate the animal control center and the grant?
Yeah.
And then she told, if I remember correctly, that they raised $77,000 fund raise, too.
Right. I didn't say that at the last meeting.
I would like to look at this.
It's growth.
What's the law? What's the law on, what does the state tell you you have to do for a dog catcher or an animal control? Do you have to do anything?
I don't know the law. I don't, I can research and find it out.
Well, I quote...
Right here, right now. Cut this by 5,000. I'll give my cell phone number, and I'll catch all dogs, and I'll take care of stuff for $100,000 a year.
Well, you know, Al, I, I...
Right, and I'll do it.
Al, I took the liberty of calling a few area towns that still have their own, and, you know, they're paying like $78,000 a year.
And I know the rules have changed about that facility, is air conditioned, is heated, and all that. They can live in my house for that. You know, you're laughing at it, but it's like, are you kidding me?
I know. That's why I can't wait to get, oh, oh, God.
That's 24-hour-a-day service.
Right. Seven days a week.
And it's not just dogs?
It's critters.
I know. I'll get birds in your world, too.
Well, could be some other things, too, Al.
Could you get one of their budgets?
Hey, one night, I caught Freddie's horse.
Freddie's a horse?
Not anymore.
That's what he said, he caught it.
You added it to your farm.
All right, do we have any more questions on our $105,000 dog catcher?
We're going to get more information, right?
Right.
Please.
Yeah.
All right. 4302, refuse, no, refuse.
Oh, that's just contractual, so there's nothing.
Right.
What, are we going into the third year of the contract?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that the last year?
No, it's a five-year, five-year contract.
The totes are in there.
Yeah, well, it took a while.
Because it took two years.
Just got the totes a year ago.
Right. Because it, they won the contract.
Oh, the first year, they didn't, we didn't, we weren't automated yet.
Educated, and there was like, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Public work.
Cut, cut, cut.
All right, let's see, new scissors to cut the grass.
Franny will step down and be, just be the dog catcher.
He can make more money and have less headaches, maybe.
Due to global warming, Franny, do you really think we need all that salt?
So you want to hire the superintendent?
Fran, what happens to salt if unlike this year you had any leftover? Can you carry that from year to year? So we're, Mike, you cut five thousand dollars from the salt budget after the winter we had, you think we're going to be better next year?
Well, the averages, maybe, I don't know. We've got to get some relief somewhere, you know?
So your estimate for overtime for storms?
Yeah.
You have it twelve storms, you know, all your guys and whatever, that, is that just a historical outbreak?
There used to be fifteen storms or even more like that, and then you hear we keep chopping them out. Just for the FYI, we had thirty events this year, which means not just snowstorms, but in the vents, ice, whatever.
But thirty events all at twelve hours?
Uh, well, no, they, well, no, not all.
Okay, so it could average out to the twelve storms at twelve hours?
Storms that, probably twelve storms at twenty-four hours or thirty hours. And you got some that are maybe only six hours, typically, with the ice.
So this overtime is budgeted for next year is less money than we spent this year?
No, uh, no, I think we had twelve storms last year. What I'm saying is we've been cutting the last few years, we went from, I can't think back far enough, I thought the president looked at me, think about it, but it was over fifteen storms we used to budget for back in the day, how we.
And we had thirty events this year, so my question is, are we, are we covered with what you're asking for?
Well, did we overspend these times this year? I don't think. So looking in this crystal ball, what we have been calling it. We're slowly digging ourselves the hole. We talk about salt, you know, you, every year you take a little salt, the salt, which, at the end of the day, you eat salt, you eat salt, you know, I don't stop because we don't have the salt, but.
You have to buy it.
Yeah, but then, you know, this year now, well, up until the other day, we had, we're probably half full right now, which is better than it was three weeks ago or four weeks ago.
What do we typically go into the, I mean, is that, should that, in a, in a normal year, are you full at the end of the year? You try to be full to start the next year?
We try to fill it up. This year's price for next, to start out next year, the last few years we have.
And what's that like forty or fifty ton?
No, we should have about twelve hundred ton in the barn. And we got about, I'll guess nine, I mean, it's about half full right now, which is, which is good. I'm very happy that we even got that in there. Because if it's not salt, then you're paying probably a higher price next year.
Right.
And you got your September buying salt, you know, you've got to drop. Try to make it into, that's what happens. That's why in February we had the big prices going on.
Right.
Because, you know, you, you make it till December, this year again, more storms than normal, but you make it to December, then all of a sudden, January, February, where you call for salt, they give it out.
If you run up to exit thirteen and grab it, you got to replace it.
What is the price of a ton of salt?
The treated salt's eighty-two dollars a ton.
Eighty-two?
We're going to split it next year. I think I'm going to get some regular straight salt for, like this time of year, you don't really eat treated salt, like the storm the other day. The treated salt works in a much lower temperature, like fifteen below versus twenty-eight degrees for salt, straight salt. I mean, the overtime, that's not just snow, that's for the whole year.
Right.
I mean, it says twelve storms, it's also.
No, but there's another line I know for, yes, I saw that. And I might as well ask you, on this, the part-time maintenance person that we added in this budget year, how has that been working out? Do you feel that it has saved the town money by doing?
Oh, yeah, I think so. Call less contractors, he helps out with snow too, he does all the walkways for the snow, which is a huge help.
He saved us all broken pipes and.
Oh, yeah, no, he's, he's hot around, those little deliveries that we always have, pull two guys off the road to go and do, he's ridiculous, you know, he's, you know, we have a schedule down.
He's done electrical jobs and plumbing jobs at the libraries, for example, that we would have had to hire a contractor for before, so. Been very helpful for us.
A lot of the little things, and we're still a cut off, but a lot of the little things that happen, you know, are getting, are getting fixed. I don't have to use John Florida as much as I did. We had a plumbing thing out in the hall there the other day, he came down and fixed it. We had the main water line for this building go down, there was a leak in the ceiling, we got shut the main off, we did that on a Saturday. So we have light bulbs, we finally caught up on light bulbs.
We'll never catch up on light bulbs, Fran, but we're the closest we've ever been.
Small painting jobs, we did a little, police chief managed replacing something messed up, fixing sheet rock, and all that.
So you have enough work to keep them busy?
Oh, yeah. Increase too was the, you know, the new building, the building taken this year, where he, that, that building worked out.
The one we closed in?
Yeah.
To protect our large investments?
Huge, 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 bars of trucks though. Notice our maintenance account.
What, your equipment maintenance, three-ten? Or three-eleven?
Could have made it three-ten, yeah. That overspent this year. Everything to do with snow is over. That's just keeping an old fleet running. I mean, it's, to be honest with you, you know, the other day that little storm, three breakdowns, yeah. Should believe that? It was just stupid stuff, but it happens. You notice there's only a hundred, a hundred yards of topsoil for this year coming up. I can use a hundred, a hundred yards of topsoil a day. At eighty-five dollars a road, about a hundred and twenty-six acre, more than that now, it's almost a hundred and thirty-five acres of land. Every ball field needs something, a hundred yards of last, if you're last, I mean, yeah, it's ridiculous. And we have material that could be screened, and we're not screening it, because we can't afford to screen, to screen it. You know, it's ten grand to get a screening plan in there for a week or a month, for a month, just to screen what we got, and we have material.
How big a screener do you need?
Well, good size, I mean.
What, so you'd have to rent something to screen?
Yeah, I mean, we don't, we don't own one, so we got to rent it. It's about ten thousand for a month. Get a decent sized machine here, puts a conveyor on it. I try to make it a one-man operation, so there's.
You want to use my screener?
Tree cutting, only thirteen thousand dollars, even though we still cut trees ourselves, we cut trees a year or so. The other thirteen thousand is for trees that we can't reach, like tree hazards. I did just get a call from, or Mike and I both got an email today from UI, kind of a meeting with them, but, you know, they're, this is over and above what they're looking to do, and we don't really know the area yet either. But they changed it from two thousand eighteen to two thousand fourteen.
This year, right.
Lot of tree problems, real lot.
I was surprised, we weren't even good down.
I see all the orange stickers all over, all the way up.
Yeah, all that big, big trees are gone, and they put thirty-inch round trees and good job, puts up a road.
What do we have to, and how long does that have to go? The well monitoring at the landfill?
Thirty years since the closure, which was about nineteen ninety, so about two thousand twenty. We've actually backed it off over the years, we were able to reduce the amount of testing that done, but, but it's, that's a requirement for years, unless they change, but it's currently thirty years.
How do they do that? What's the, what sort of a well?
They're groundwater monitoring wells, that were, their casings down there, they're put around the landfill, there's a whole bunch of them that were put in prior to the closure. And when we contracted out, they go bail them out, and they come to them and sample them for.
Sample the water in them?
Yeah.
And it's always good?
It's always been pretty much for the parameters, a couple times we've seen something that we had to watch, but it's generally hasn't, we also sample houses, and they're down gradient from there, and those have all checked out okay. So we're definitely going to be parameters, but again, the head bill, so.
What's MS four water sampling?
Municipal stormwater, a separate stormwater system, it's a D P requirement that came down from the feds that we have to do, annual sampling at half dozen locations throughout town for water quality from our groundwater system. We have to do the annual report and submit it to D P, applying to the state type of law.
Have we locked into our pricing yet on diesel fuel or gasoline?
Yes.
So the prices in here are next year's prices?
Couple of them look a little off, I just made myself a note to check all the prices. The heating fuel, I believe we locked in at three-twenty-two, gasoline, I think, was down below three dollars a gallon. So I'm going to check the dollar amounts, and then we can adjust each of the departments accordingly if they don't have the correct amounts.
Okay, and diesel fuel, is that?
I don't remember offhand what it is, but they are all locked in.
Okay.
We were able to renew for one additional year with these two over through the product bid. At the, at the time, we renewed, locked in with heating fuel, out on the street, it was three sixty that day, and they locked us in at three-twenty-two for the coming year. But I'll confirm more of the numbers, after a while they all become kind of the same.
Okay, so for Tuesday, can we have those adjustments?
Yep.
We good? If you don't mind, I'm going to skip down to forty-four sixteen library.
Forty-four.
Forty-four sixteen library. Mr. Hall's been waiting so patiently.
Okay, so at our Saturday meeting with you, when you talked about Sunday hours? Because I see all Sunday hours were eliminated out of here, which, so the six-month figure for Sunday hours was around forty-two hundred dollars? Maybe seven hundred dollars?
Six, forty-nine sixty-nine, to be exact.
Forty-nine sixty-nine, and that was six months?
Six months of Sundays, yes.
Forty-nine.
Six months or twenty-four, twenty-four Sundays. There's actually a few more weeks than that, but any period you pick, there's going to be some holiday ones that you skip and things like that, so.
Right.
Six months slash twenty-four Sundays.
Mr. Hall, would that be for programs for the younger kids or are you going to do programming on Sundays?
I would expect that we would, we do it on Saturdays now, so yes, I would expect that it would be maybe not as much as the weekdays, but, but yeah, it would be for that. And also for the use of our facility by programs from outsiders, it opens up Sundays for that too.
It's just funny, I got a lot of phone calls, people are excited about the Sunday, and they did speak about the younger kids for Sundays, so I was just curious.
Yes, I, I would, I would say so, yes. That, when we spoke about it before, there's not much question that it would be used actively by the public. This is universal among libraries that do it. The only question is, of course, the expense and is the timing right? But I would be astonished to have us open and then not have a lot of business.
Well, I would like to make a motion to increase department forty-four sixteen, line item one oh one, by four thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Second.
Can I just interrupt? That would be the cost of it, but it is distributed differently from that.
Okay.
I can give Anthony the.
I can give Anthony the hours to plug in, or Barbara, and then they could tell you.
Well, it looked like they took it all out of full-time, the Sunday hours.
You go down to the roughly $3,000 difference in the 101 account.
Right.
Then the 102 account, you see, there's also about a $4,000, thereabouts difference, Monday, Sundays. And then there'll be a corresponding change down below on the 120 account, so if you want, we just restore those numbers back to the initial department request.
Well, what they're going, what they're going for is an intermediate request.
We're doing, yeah, we're doing a six-month.
I got that for you, Barbara. This is the six-month, 24 Sundays only, so then with full-time hours, you.
No, 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 we would do it, the, the proposal was for six months, they would probably do October through March. They wouldn't do the summer.
Not do it in the summer.
Right, so it would be at their discretion, what, six months, but that's what they had talked about?
Okay.
I think they're even happier with the, you know, the library staff and whatnot, yeah.
We'll fix it.
You'll fix it? Because I know there'll be correspondence to the 120.
Correct, yeah.
So the.
It affects 101, 102, and 120, and the total amount of the change is 4969, so I don't know if you can.
Make a motion now, or defer?
Yeah, we can, we'll do it with the correspondent, and Anthony will figure out the exact cost to those accounts. So the motion is to increase the library account to provide for Sunday openings for a six-month period, which would be determined by the library staff as to when it would be, for a total cost of $4,969.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito? Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
I just gave them the exact numbers, I actually did have them.
I knew you would have.
All right. I think we have time to do one more department, and.
Can I raise my hand again?
Of course.
Actually, to tell you where you can cut us a little, well, I.
And that's why you got an increased.
Sit down, sit, sit down.
See, this is how you have to do it, Fran.
This is, I didn't have a chance to review with you yet, Mike, but this came up, and I'll get more exact numbers. This came up at the Saturday meeting, the question was raised, I think, by Mr. Caprio and others about the maintenance on the elevators. Did we have to have the full-service monthly maintenance on the elevators, and I did talk to the company, and not only they do offer other plans, but based on our usage and our size, they felt that a, a lesser plan would be perhaps appropriate for us. So they were, I haven't got the exact quote from them yet, but it'd be somewhere probably $1,700 to $2,000 less on that. But.
That's half the cost of the program.
So we will, but it was something that was brought up by you folks, and something that I hadn't thought about, but when I talked to them, they said, yeah, tell us what the usage is and everything, and they said, yeah, we, we have another plan that you can go to, so.
Great.
Do you think you might be able to have figures by next week, Tuesday or Wednesday?
I hope so, yeah, because they're supposed to get me a quote on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, but.
That's a great interruption.
You see, Fran, if you, if you only treated half the snow. We could get some Sunday overtime.
The other half would, the other half would melt.
You could just plow half the street. And you'd alternate, one snowstorm, you'd do the odd side, and one snowstorm, you'd do the even side.
And just put in for a one-month winter.
I'd put in for light bulbs.
All right, we're going to go to 4504. 45.
Social service.
04, social service. Because I saw Louisa hiding in the back.
4505.
How come I don't have it?
Yeah, it's in there. 4504.
Yeah, I got it now. I don't know.
Besides salary, there's not a, yeah.
Well, Joanne asked me to do it, and I do it, the deputy says. Yeah, Anthony must have messed up my book when he took it.
Well, you have a different budget number than us then, huh?
Yeah.
That was a month of change, that should be in the book before.
Anthony.
Is this what they did last night, yeah?
Oh, you stuck it together. Thank you.
Yeah, there's.
Okay.
Well, now, it looks like she got enough business cards this year to last her next year, because there's no cost for business cards next year for you, Louisa, so. Looks like we bought them all this year for you. I have nothing in this calendar.
Are you the only person, why are you the assistant director?
Technically, the town manager is the director.
That's right, yeah. Second. Well, the, the next budget workshop.
Moved by Councilor Fawnin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Next Tuesday.
Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
So next Tuesday will be our next budget, and Wednesday, and possibly Thursday.